Okay. The clock. Call the meeting to order and I'm pretty sure I don't mess anything here because I'm pretty sure somebody's written something in here that I'm not anticipating. Okay, uh, I don't see anybody here in the public right now. Roll call, City Clerk, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Protim Loa.
Here.
Councilmembers Carrillo.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
And Bettencourt.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public is invited to comment on any closed session item listed below. Please submit a speaker's form for the, to the City Clerk before this portion of the meeting begins. Each person addressing the council is customary given up the three minutes to speak with additional time or if you need a translator. Amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please present the City Clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, materials will be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click raise your hand button. Uh, we all know how to do that by now, huh? Uh, press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and begin speaking. IT, you have any callers?
We do. Jason Zink, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Zink, which item is this?
Uh, this is regarding the lawsuits litigation.
Okay.
I, uh, text you guys the information. I'm very concerned that, uh, Councilmember Juan Carrillo, uh, is sitting in these litigation meetings when he has a relationship with, uh, Attorney Shankman. Uh, Shankman had called me several months ago and was trying to get, uh, information about you, Mayor Hoffbauer. I didn't feel good about the conversation. He told me, uh, Juan Carrillo had asked him to call me to find out information.
Thank you.
And then I see this, uh, for Palmdale First advertisement with Juan on top and then a person who's also running for the city council and worked for Shankman, Andrea Alarcon. And I'm thinking, what's going on here? Here he has privy information. You guys are trying to negotiate a lawsuit that could cost ten million dollars, JJ Winton's lawsuit against you. And you have to pay him for all the years until he was retirement. And he has privileged information or relationship that he did not disclose to you, the City Attorney, or the public. That's not right. You guys should know this. I'm just a citizen. Austin, you, you excuse yourself on anything, anything that could be a conflict of interest. And here you have Juan sitting there having a relationship, running with somebody who is in Shankman's office, negotiating ten million dollars worth of lawsuits potentially. This is not right. I'm only, I'm asking him to be dismissed. I'm asking for a censor against him because he should know better of all people. I know Loa knows. I know you know, Mayor, being in office for twenty years. This is wrong. This is about as crooked and dirty as you can get. Inside information. And yet, I don't know what the lawsuit is. I don't know what JJ did. But yet Juan's talking to the attorney. And he's trying to, he's trying to sabotage this, this city. He did away with the mayor position without going before a vote of the people. He influenced you guys when he was working with Shankman, discussing information with Shankman. In my opinion, he needs to be dismissed. He needs to remove himself and I want to see a censor against him. And now I see Laura, your picture's on with Juan. This is bad, you guys. This is terrible. And how could you do that to the mayor of ours?
Any?
No more for now.
Any others? Okay. Thank you, sir. City Clerk, do you have any speakers left?
No public comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, City Attorney? Okay, uh, and by the way, for the record, you're not, you're not the individual that's tasked to the negotiating team, so just so they...
I was just wondering what kind of relationship it is that they speak about.
Well, I just, I was just clarifying that for the record, so, okay.
So, uh, unless there's any, anything further, we can, uh, recuse the closed session.
Okay. So just the items that are on there?
Correct. We'll be discussing what is on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you.
Close session, the four items, all the agenda and no reportable action was taken during close session.
Alright, thank you. So we will, uh, get right back on the correct page here. So we'll adjourn that close session meeting. We took roll call earlier, that still stands. We will now have a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence in honor of our troops and first responders and anybody else we deem appropriate here, so. Will you please stand, face the flag and join with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, oh, we are here, I didn't get a chance to meet our, meet our dog. Alright, see, that's what it's all about there, right there folks, right there, huh? Huh, you good baby? So, what's our critter's name today?
This is Saturn.
Saturn. So, you know what? We need to adopt every single critter in those shelters and that's why we do this. We want to bring the public's attention to the overloading that we have over there and make sure that y'all have an opportunity and we've had, we've had them adopted, you know, like at the door, you know? They didn't even get them back. So, this is Jesse from Animal Care and Control and tell us a little bit about Saturn here. I'm gonna make friends with Saturn and I'm sure my wife is wondering, uh-oh, another one.
Thanks sir. Good evening everyone. Saturn is a seven-year-old German Shepherd, he's neutered and he came into our care on the fifteenth of September. So he's been one of our longest residents right now. So he became available four days later on the nineteenth. And behaviorally, he's okay for public adoption, middle school age and calm dogs are recommended. As you can tell, he's pretty calm right now, he makes friends with everybody. True, you know, us, we're old guys, they like us.
How many years I've been doing this, I've never been fit. So what do we, what's the process if somebody would like to adopt their pet?
So he is available for adoption during the week or any time of the week, you can make an appointment to meet him and take him home or you can come in after two o'clock, from two to closing is walk-ins and you can walk freely through the adoptables and pick your pet and take it home. But he's got all the shots, he's got his chip implanted and just looking for a good home, he can go and get lazy with it, you know?
He looks like he's got lazy now.
Yep.
So, right over here in Sierra Highway?
Yes sir.
And do we still have lovely bonus gifts?
Any adopter of a council cute critter gets a goodie bag from the City of Palmdale. Wanted to let everybody know as well that currently Animal Care and Control has any cat over five dollars, the adoption fee, any cat over five years of age is, has adoption fees of five dollars, so five for five. And wanted to remind everybody of the City of Palmdale's low-cost spay neuter program that is available to anybody that resides in the incorporated City of Palmdale and that is through our Measure AB funding.
So this is all about getting these guys a good home, right? So Jesse is one of our volunteers, just want to remind you if you want to volunteer over at Animal Control, they have a short training program because they don't want you just suddenly showing up one day and, you know, not knowing the process, right? Because there's always a process, right? Always. So, so you can call over there, look for Jesse and he's not a hard guy to find and Saturn is ready to go home with somebody, right?
Yes sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. Alright, good luck baby, huh? Good luck, huh? You go with him. I know, I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna be, my dog's gonna smell this, I'll get in trouble.
Alright. That was easy enough. Alright, I need a waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Loa, second by Ms. Bentoncourt, city clerk.
All are here to nightmare, so we don't need a voice.
Oh, okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public comments on listed agenda items excluding public hearings. So the public hearings has got, have got their own time, right? So you can address the city council once per meeting during public comments. This portion of the public comment is on any item listed on the agenda excluding public hearing items. The public comment on public hearing items will be heard when that matter is considered. So to address the council regarding an item on the agenda, please fill out a speakers form and submit it to the city clerk now before we call the public comment open. And any person addressing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak with up to double time allotted for non-English speakers going through a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If the, you wish to provide information to the council, please present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please press the raise your hand button, press star six to unmute yourself. When you do so, please state your name, like we all don't know how to do that by now, right? Okay, so basically, I think we're talking about the consent calendar. Yes, so this would pretty much be the consent calendar because the other items are public hearing. So IT, do you have any speakers for the agendaized items, which is the consent calendar?
None at this time.
Thank you sir.
None at this time.
None at this time. Okay, so we'll close the public comment period and we will move on to item number eleven, which is the consent calendar. Anybody on the council wish to pull an item from the consent calendar or do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as comprised?
I will approve it.
Mr. Loa makes the motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Bentoncourt. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Without objections, so ordered. Okay, so now we're moving on to public hearings. I have, Mr. Loa is asked to recuse himself because of a proximity issue here, so he'll step off the dais. Do you want to make the statement on the record while you're stepping off?
I do, I will recuse myself.
Microphone?
I am recusing myself on item twelve point one as one of the items that is being proposed is within 500 feet of a building that I own on Palmdale Boulevard. So I will recuse myself, I will leave the dais and go into the audience and then I wish to speak on the item.
Is that acceptable?
As a citizen.
Yes, so state law clearly states that he does have the authority to speak as a member of the public and so he can, and he can sit in the public just as any other member of the public could. Thank you. So I think we knew the answer, but that's for everybody else and the millions of people watching from at home. Okay? Alright, so we have a public hearing twelve point one. This is an introduction and adoption of an ordinance number sixteen hundred and ordinance of the City of Palmdale, city council of the City of Palmdale approving specific plan amendment twenty-one dash zero zero three. A request to modify the boundary on land use designations, permitted uses, standards of development for Palmdale Transit Area Specific Plan. Staff references Mr. Gerbey and he's got his staff here. State your name so everybody knows who's here.
Good evening, Justin Souter, associate planner.
Okay, thank you sir.
Alright, so yes, we have specific plan, specific plan amendment twenty-one zero zero three. Do I need to read the title again or since you already, should I read it again?
Is there a, did my, did my statement cover that, sir? I believe you did read the title, am I?
Yeah.
Okay. Whoever looks at the city clerk. That's right, she, she's the one that knows these things.
Making my job easy, thank you. Alright, so tonight, the proposal is a request to amend the Palmdale Transit Area Specific Plan. It's approximately seven hundred forty-six acres and generally bound by Technology Drive to the north, State Route fourteen to the west, East Avenue Q to the south and Tenth Street East to the east. There are several proposed changes within this specific plan. Some are revisions that will help clean up, some are revisions that will help clean up the document such as amending the regulating plan by modifying the eastern and southern boundary to alleviate split zoning, updating a parcel that was erroneously designated as open space recreation that should have been general urban and including a parking ratio table. The document currently specifies that all uses within the specific plan area have a reduced parking ratio of twenty-five percent of that which is specified in the Palmdale municipal code. The Palmdale municipal code will be updated with a new reduced parking ratio as part of the zoning ordinance amendment update project that is implementing the general plan update. So a parking table was included within the specific, specific plan to memorialize the reduced parking ratio rather than referring back to the PMC, which is about to change.
Justin, does this include the new state rules on residential within a half mile of transit? There was just a new bill signed on that.
So it doesn't include that, but we would still, for projects in the past, we still refer to that, but this parking ratio table doesn't have those included. But projects would still be subject to, to that bill. There are also some changes to development standards such as removing the minimum floor aerial ratio requirement in all designations, allowing office uses as an accessory use in the T-five urban center zone and allowing express car washes. The recommendation for this item is to adopt ordinance number sixteen hundred approving specific plan amendment twenty-one zero zero three and find that the project is consistent with the previously approved environmental documents. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you sir. Council, any questions for staff at this time? We don't have any questions. We're good? Okay, so we will open a public hearing at this time and city clerk?
We have Jason Zink.
Mr. Zink?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I think this just proves my point that the general plan should not have been passed when it was passed. It was hastily passed. This is another piece that, that's fixing the general plan. There are also more mistakes in the general plan that needed to be fixed and we'll be working on that now. The way that this general plan was pushed together so fast, so rapidly after we worked, what, two and a half years on it and not giving the community and the property owners the time to give input at the end, once everything was collected, I think was wrong. And I think by us approving this one tonight, that should have been in the general plan and showing that there was a property that was mistakenly put, rezoning differently in the specific plan, which could have been done in the general plan. You hastily pushed a general plan that was not complete and I think this proves my point.
So, so just for clarification, you're supporting this change?
I'm supporting the change, but I don't, I would have expanded it further, I would have got the hotels in it, I would have got that. I would have got that big property to the south of Palmdale Boulevard along the freeway in, in this plan. I just think, why wasn't a city hall in this plan for a transit specific plan?
Thank you, sir. Oh, let me hold on. IT, did you have anybody?
None at this time.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, city clerk?
No more public comments.
Okay, I believe Mr. Loa had indicated that he was wanting to speak on this item.
Good evening, everyone. It's a... I had to do this once before during my first council back in 2001. There was, there was an effect on a, on a, on a property that I had. So it's kind of an unusual thing. But I don't have a problem with the changes to the specific plan with one exception. And that is, and I don't know who the sponsors are exactly of the car wash. But it seemed to me during the presentations of the specific plan that we were trying to get a more urban appearance to Palmdale Boulevard, to improve the view of it. And I believe that the car wash that's being proposed, and as I say, I don't have any issue with it. I mean, I use a car wash. But I don't think it's consistent with what we had approved in the specific plan. And if we look at portions of the specific plan, we talk about recommendations for high-density housing, office hotel, and street-facing retail. We're also talking about to create a heart for the city. It just seems to me that this is a proposed use that's inconsistent with that vision of urbanizing our core and making it consistent with a walkability kind of community. That would be part of the transit once the high-speed rail comes here. We talk about safety, public safety in the specific plan. Now, as I understand this project, cars are going to go in to the car wash off of Fifth Street East. They're going to circle around and exit on Fifth Street East, causing some issues, including maybe putting a divider in the middle of Fifth Street East, separating it from the Viata Market that's across the street. I'm not sure that's consistent with public safety, and it is within a reasonable amount of space to my building. One of our community design elements in the specific plan, call for multiple family housing and provide a safe and pleasant living environment. And I'm not suggesting that a car wash is inconsistent with safety. I, I just believe it's inconsistent with the vision. And we shouldn't approve that portion of it. I'm not opposing the rest of it.
City Clerk?
Right. Well, in sum, I just think that we were presented with a beautiful plan for a specific transit, transit project. And this is inconsistent with it as far as allowing a car wash there is concerned. I will now leave the council and recuse myself offsite. Thank you all for listening.
The music. Where'd you leave those last time, Austin? The music, the headphones. Yeah.
Right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Just in case you didn't catch the joke, he's, he is allowed to listen. He's just not, he's just out of here. He can listen, he's just not in vision of the city council.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to close public hearing. I have a motion by Mr. Corio. Second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered. Okay, counsel comments? Questions? Or a motion?
Motion to approve as presented by staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I, I understand what Mr. Loa was discussing there. And I also understand where Mr. Zink is coming from. We have to, we're gonna find stuff forever, just as you did with the last one. For a quarter century, we're gonna be gone. And they're still gonna be finding stuff that we worked on. So anyways, okay. So I have a motion and a second to, I guess it's to introduce and adopt ordinance number 1600. Correct, sir? Okay, so do we have to read that again now? Okay, so I think, I think we already read that. Okay. Wait a second. Make sure I got the right, right number there.
Can, can I just make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
It's unrelated, but looking at the maps that they have provided for this, I think it's confusing to many people that have been out here for a long time that we have something called Palmdale Station. And across the street, we have Palmdale Sheriff's Station. If you've lived out here for any amount of time, the Palmdale Sheriff's Station has always been referred to as Palmdale Station. So I just...
Is it, is it in order?
Yeah. Perhaps we need to work on that because if you tell somebody, go to the Palmdale Station, they're gonna end up with the sheriff's station and not the transit station. So we need to try and clarify that.
I think it depends on where you want to go.
Especially if they're across the street from each other. Yeah.
Where do you, where do you want to end up? Where do you want to end up?
Good point, good point.
All right, so we introduced and... And we'll now take a... I'm just trying to follow the, I got a staple on the way here. I'm trying to read this. Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so it carries four, zero, one with Mr. Loa recusing himself. I think carries. Thank you. Turn the music off and have him come back in. Thank you, sir. Item number 12.2. Let me see. So I don't take somebody's job here. Does somebody want to read this or do you want me to read it again?
I'll read it.
Okay. Is item 12.2, it's ordinance number 1595. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Brian George. I am the building official for the city of Palmdale. The item we have tonight is introduction and adoption of ordinance 1595, an ordinance of the city of, the city council of the city of Palmdale adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Residential Existing Building Green Building Standards Plumbing Mechanical and Electrical Codes with proposed amendments and Title 20, Title 32 Los Angeles County Fire Code. So every three years, the state of California adopts new building codes and standards based on Title 24 California Code of Regulations. Local jurisdictions have 180 days since publishing of those to make amendments based on local conditions. There are three criteria. One is topographical, one is geographic, and the other is climatic. The ordinance 1595 adopts by reference those portions of the 2022 California Building Standards Code as described and outlines local amendments based on climatic and geographic criteria due to the city of Palmdale's unique local conditions. Additional snow load and seismic considerations are reflected in the proposed amendments in consideration of the city of Palmdale's potential snowfall and proximity to local earthquake fault lines and are consistent with the previous code adoptions. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel?
No questions for me.
Pray for snow.
Yeah, there you go. Exactly. Okay, thank you very much, sir. So we've read the title of the ordinance, and we'll now open a public hearing. IT, do you have any speakers on item 12.2?
None at this time.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
None at this time.
Okay. All right, so I'll need a motion to close public hearing? Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Okay, counsel comments?
No comments, something that has to be done.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor to adopt ordinance, to introduce and adopt ordinance number 1595? Aye? Anybody opposed? So ordered. All right, we have 12.3, introduction and adoption of ordinance number 1599. Who's handling this one? Janelle? Ms. Sampson? Make sure you state your names so that everybody knows.
Yes, good evening, Janelle Sampson, Director of Finance. So I believe you just read the full ordinance, so I don't need to read that. The item before you is... This is to adopt ordinance 1599 amending in its entirety, Chapter 3.8 of the Palmdale Municipal Code relating to purchasing. So Section 302 of the City of Palmdale Charter authorizes the city to establish standards, procedures, rules, and regulations relating to the purchasing of goods, services, and property. The municipal code, Chapter 3.8, is currently in existence and was last updated in its entirety in 2010. I'm sorry, yes, 2010. So the goal of our revision here is to update, to reflect best purchasing practices, improve accountability, and to establish efficient procedures for purchasing throughout the city. Specifically, this ordinance updates and adds definitions for clarity, defines solicitation processes based on dollar thresholds, and defines and clarifies procurement practices for public works projects consistent with state law. If there's any questions, I am available.
Counsel? IT, any, we'll open a public hearing. IT, do you have any, anybody in the queue?
None at this time.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
Jason Zink.
Mr. Zink? Welcome back.
Welcome back. Yeah, I want to talk about purchasing. I want the public to be aware that the city bought a computer system for $800,000, around $800,000, and did not use it. Threw it in the trash. This is money that could have gone to, you know, fixed streets, public safety, could have done Palmenthal Historic Park, which I've been asking for forever. Doesn't even have a park sign on it. Could have bought internet and basic cable for our senior citizens. Could have helped put a supermarket in Corson area so the seniors and the poorer people that we all put together in that one area could have a local shopping place to go shopping to. We could have done a lot with that money. Eight hundred thousand, gone. There's just no excuse for it. No excuse to, to vote for incumbents that allow that kind of waste. I mean, I just, I don't get it. I asked for simple things, youth programs, Palmenthal Park to preserve the land around Lake Palmdale, preserve Uno Park, I mean Una Lake, Beryl Springs, Joshua Trees. And you guys just blow money on attorney fees, on lawsuits, on $800,000 computer systems. What do we get? We voted in 20, AV, Measure AB, 22 million dollars a year extra you guys get. What do we get from it? I wish I would have never supported it and voted for it. What are we getting? This city is really messed up. I don't know what it's gonna take to fix it, but I hope so because what, what we're going through right now is not right. We deserve better.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
No more public comments.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing, please? Have a motion and a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, so ordered. Okay, counsel? Okay, I have a motion to approve, to introduce and adopt ordinance number 1599. And I have a second by Mr. Corio. Okay, all right. So not that the speaker's comments did not have any, was nothing to them, but what we have to do now is we're trying to fix these processes and move forward. So I think that that's the thing. All in favor of the motion? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so ordered. All right, we are number 13, public comments on non-agenda items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the council on any subject within the city's subject-matter jurisdiction, not on the agenda. Under state legislation in general, no action can be taken on items not specifically referenced on the agenda, but may offer, but may offer suggestions on how your concerns may best be resolved. To address the council regarding a non-agenda item, please fill out a speaker's form and submit it now before we call these, this item. Each person addressing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak with up to double the time allotted for non-English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending a meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button. Press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. IT?
None at this time.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
Phil Denny.
Mr. Denny?
Not used to being here this early in the, in meetings.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the stipends again. This was first brought up September 7th. And I spoke to you early October, asking it to be put on the agenda for October 19th. That did not happen. I did my own little bit of research on the commissions and the boards and so forth. It was stated earlier that there were 12 of them. I found 11. That part's not important. But anyway, regarding the commissions and the people on them, there's a few, as few as two people and as many as 14 people on them. And for the most part, there's less than half a dozen. And the meetings are held as needed, once a month, once every two months, and one of them is once a year. So... So I'm asking the city council one more time. Put this on the agenda for November 16th. Vote on it. Do the right thing. I have it through good authority that city council has a very handsome increase coming as well as, as well as a lot of the city of Palmdale employees. And that's good. That's the right thing to do. We're in an inflationary period of high inflation right now. And you did the right thing. Taking care of the council, taking care of the other, other employees. And now you need to take care of the one that has not been taken care of yet, the commissioners, the board members, and some of the others. So I just want to implore you, put this on the, on the agenda for November 16th. Vote on it. And you all already know the figures and all of that, so I don't need to repeat it. But put it on the agenda, November 16th. Vote on it and get it done.
Thank you, sir. I do know that the only comment I can make on that is know the staff is analyzing a few of the other kind of idiosyncrasies, certain training and reporting requirements, and some other legal stuff. So I don't think it's a dead issue, but yeah, you're not wrong. Okay? At least, I don't think so. All right, city clerk?
Benedict Waters.
Mr. Waters? Nice shirt.
Thank you. I was here a month ago complaining about the waste management scam foisted on the citizens of Palmdale. 26% increase with no justification. But I was listening to... But I was listening to, uh, the gentleman speak about, uh, wasted money, and I think I will pursue that in the time that I have available. At that hearing a month ago, Snyder Electric presented a proposal where they said they were gonna save you, save the city, seventeen point eight million dollars over twenty years by replacing the, uh, air conditioning units of Palmdale. Commercial units. It noted that, uh, they were fifteen years old, and that is correct. Commercial AC units do have a service life fifteen years. Yet they claimed they were going to save this money over twenty years, so you had a five-year gap. If you look at it through, under the principles of, uh, general accounting, then you can't, you can't do that. You can't make a fifteen-year asset, uh, count for twenty years of savings, it's a five-year gap. Common sense should have told you that was wrong. There were several things wrong with their presentation, but that one in particular, you kind of stuck out, uh, kind of stood out to me. And no one on the city council called money. No one said, "Your, your figures are wrong, your numbers are wrong." You either sat there nodding your heads. Uh, the gentleman is correct. Palmdale is a mismanaged mess. You need to get somebody in here who knows what they're doing.
Thank you, sir. And I think, uh, just to, for clarification, on that waste management fee, I, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like four dollars, was roughly four dollars was the actual waste management that went to them?
Four point twenty-seven percent.
And, and the other twenty-one were state mandated pass-throughs for organics recycling, it wasn't part of our contract. It was what came down from the state. So I'm stuck paying that same damn bill.
No, 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 no.
SB thirteen eighty-three compliance.
What's that?
SB thirteen eighty-three, organics waste compliance and diversion.
No, object, but municipalities do not, uh, doing what you claim is required by state law. And I've read the law, and it doesn't require this, uh, organic waste process.
So, we can talk about that offline, but I've been involved in that, so if you, if you email me, we'll sit down, we can have breakfast and I'll go over, but we've been banging our heads against the wall with the state about, because we got the letter threatening us, so ten thousand dollars a day in fines, so.
Well, they're not flying Los Angeles, they're not following me. I, I spoke to the San Tito Department at Los Angeles, they're not doing it.
Okay, well, let's sit down and talk about it so I can find that loophole.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Jason Zink.
Mr. Zink?
Okay, I urge the people of Palmdale to vote no on, on Measure One, which would, uh, we, uh, allow abortion to, uh, put on California State, uh, Constitution. It is extreme. It allows late-term abortion, killing kids at six, seven, eight, nine months in the womb. It also allows a mother to kill their babies if it's a boy or a girl, they can kill it based on that. It is extreme. We need moderate laws passed that the majority of people can vote on. We do not need extreme. I urge you to vote no on every measure, and I urge you to vote for conservative, moderate Republicans. So we have balance in the state. Right now, it's just too extreme, it's just rubber stamping, they, they don't think about consequences. So I urge you to vote for Republican. We, we do not want high crime, we do not want high gas prices and to be relied on by foreign governments for oil, where, um, su- supply chains like baby formula. It's just, it's just out of hand. They're destroying our country. The other thing I want to bring up is, uh, Juan Creelo running for state assembly. I urge you to vote for Paul Marsh, who's a moderate conservative. Juan has been, in my opinion, behind the scenes, ca- creating chaos within this city. He, uh, voted for the five districts, which, uh, took the mayor out of the hands of the people, and they voted to take it out. Not the people of Palmdo voted, but the council member voted it out. Uh, he had, uh, Shankman call me to get dirt on the mayor, and, uh, when Shankman's suing our ci- sued our city for seven million dollars, got it, and now he's suing with all the other employees, city employees. And he's talking and negotiating with Shankman, and yet he's in closed session with all you. He can influence you guys, he's not part of the negotiation, uh, team, but guess what? You guys influence the negotiation team, right? You tell them, "Okay, we'll settle for that amount." Juan can't even get grass at his park, okay? Five years on this city, and he didn't even get lawn in his city park in his district. He has not done what I thought he should have done for the Latino people either. So I'm urging you to vote for Paul Marsh for state assembly, because Juan, you mess with the devil, you get burnt. And you deserve to get burnt, and you do not deserve to represent the people of this thirty-ninth district.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
No more public comments.
Thank you. Okay, we will, um, council members, do you have, are there, are there any, uh, relevant comments on, uh, your, uh, committee reports or are you turning in your calendars?
I, uh, typed mine up and turned mine in, it's public record, but, um, can I just say one thing real fast? Um, I just wanted to get a, give a shout out to one of our local residents by the name of Jan, who, um, I want to wish her well and a, and a happy recovery, and I think you all know Jan.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So she's, she's facing some challenges, and I just want her to know that we, we embrace her and we're here for her if she needs us.
Thanks. Anything that you want to specifically report on, sir?
Well, I just want to say that I attended a number of, uh, events during the month. Starting with the AV Mental Health Awareness Day Walk, uh, I attended that. I did go to the, uh, fair, uh, in particular, the Yellow Valley Fair that was, uh, held in, um, September. And, uh, there's a Hispanic Day concert, uh, and afterwards, uh, there's a, an event that's held by Amigos de la Feria. It's part of, uh, raising funds for a community center at the fairgrounds. Uh, it was very well attended. Uh, we do a Spanish, uh, radio program, uh, once, uh, once a month, and, uh, we do updates for the city and communicate with the Spanish-speaking, uh, population uh, on that, and that was, uh, that was done on September fifth, and we did it again this morning. Uh, I attended the, uh, SCAG meeting, um, uh, Transportation Committee, I attended by Zoom on that. Uh, we did have a, well, before we get to that, we do have briefings, uh, before these, uh, council meetings, uh, and, uh, I attended a briefing for the council meeting that was held last month. We also had a special, uh, city council meeting on September twenty-fourth, excuse me, October twenty-fourth, to, uh, finalize the Ritter Ranch, uh, CFD formation, uh, that's held here, a special meeting. And, um, the AVTA, which we met on October twenty-fifth. And the principal thing that happened there is that continuing with the, uh, electrification of the transportation, we did, um, per, uh, uh, we did approve, um, substantial amount of money, six million dollars to purchase more electrical buses, uh, to further supplement, uh, the fleet that's already in place. Now, that's been a nationally recognized, uh, success for the Yellow Valley. Uh, insofar as our continuing discussions with stakeholders in the community uh, regarding, uh, the, um, uh, the application of funds that were adopted, that was adopted for the budget, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, directed towards mental health initiatives, uh, we did meet with, uh, the Palmdale Regional Medical Center, uh, executive, and we had some very productive discussions about what we're gonna do with those funds. That follows discussions that we've had with Yellow Valley Hospital and with Los Angeles County Department of Health. And, uh, I think we're making some progress there as to what is going to best impact directly persons that are affected by mental health issues, which are quite evident in our city. All you have to do is go around the city, and you'll see people who are talking to themselves, not talking on phones, talking to themselves, gesturing, and then also getting involved in some very serious crimes that we have recently had here in the city that I believe, I don't have inside information on this, but I believe that clearly there's either some kind of a drug abuse issue or a mental health issue that directly went to the tragic death of at least two people. So it's a very serious problem facing our community, and I'm very happy that our council voted to adopt money to try to do what we can as a city. And that's my report, sir.
Thank you. So just, uh, on that note, again, I'm listening to the radio tonight, and units are calling for the Met Teams, and the response is, we can't get a response from them. So it doesn't do the public any good, doesn't do the deputies any good, and all it does is feed the newspaper articles when you have, situations where you have, uh, regular patrol deputies trying to deal with complicated mental health issues, and then it all goes to hell in a handbasket, next thing you know, it's a headline in the paper over some of these settlements. And for the record, many of those settlements are the result of the direction of the insurance companies, so. But, okay, Mr. Creelo?
I attended a couple of, uh, events, uh, one of them being the, uh, uh, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, luncheon. They had, uh, some veterans, uh, speak at that event, letting people know about their existing resources for veterans. The, uh, diversity event, uh, happened in Ponzi Clan last week, that's another one I attended with, uh, Councilmember Laura Betancourt. Uh, the Palmda School District just opened a, oh, you were there too?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but the GSCS just left. Uh, Palmda School District, they had a, um,
Gun, yeah.
Opening for the Filling Track over by the Jawors, then it's the new high school they have on Avenue R and Fortyeth. Uh, really amazing, it's something like fifty million dollar facility, something that's gonna be very beneficial to our kids. Uh, being able to train and be able to participate in state, even national competitions, a really nice facility. Um, I forget a couple other ones that I attended, uh, with the mayor, one of them being the diversity.
Yeah, but, yeah. Oh, there's so many things we're, uh, participating in. Mr. Bishop, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, I'll go down the short, uh, list here. Um, a lot of the overlapping events, uh, Mr. Roy, I went to the fair. I attended Kaleidoscope, uh, it was nice to see, uh, all those vendors out there in the amphitheater getting used again, so my hat's off to the Parks Department. Um, I don't think there was a, a s- a spot available for another vendor, so it looks like you guys really packed the place. Um, we had the council workshop, NCTC, our Transportation Coalition, we're working on, uh, a couple of things we discussed was, uh, the, the ridership on Metro and how some of the homeless people are getting here, so we're we're taking a, a dive into that and figuring out what's happening and how they're getting here, because with the colder months approaching, it's, this is not the place for them to be. And, uh, we need to make sure that that's not happening, that they're not getting shipped up here at all.
Did you, did you listen in on the Metro meeting?
Which one?
The one the other day where they discussed this?
What did they say?
Okay, so, uh, I acknowledge that I, that Metro and MetroLink, although they overlap, are two different boards, but I, I brought that back up to them again. Uh, Long Beach, um, um, got, got quite a bit of headlines when they complained about the issue.
Cause they have an end of line as well, right?
Yeah, they have end of line, and then Arcadia did and several other, so, uh, 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 everybody got to talk about their end of the line problems, and then we all got one minute to tell them about ours. And, uh, but the, um, uh, the important point was, uh, that the problem doesn't go away, that, eh, and something else that, uh, exacerbates a problem up here, in addition to the end of the line, is the lack of GR housing up here. And so many of the people that go in and look for a general relief voucher are given it, but none of the vendors out here, there are no vendors out here. And it's been that way for years and years and years and years. So they give them an AVTA and a Metro, and a MetroLink pass, and they, they go down below, and then they come back up here to continue working on their case. So some of the guys that show back, show up are showing back up. But, like you say, in the colder months, a lot of folks just, it's a nice warm place to ride all day. And, uh, there's gotta be a better solution, uh, to solving that, so Metro is committing to put, uh, teams on the Metro system, that needs to be extended over to the MetroLink system as well, ambassadors to, uh, help deal with that situation, so.
Yeah, there definitely needs to be a level of accountability of what's going on, because what a waste.
Well, they try to, they try to say it's not our fault, you know, we just provide transportation, but you can't be creating the problem and then, you know, denying that you're part of it.
Yeah, not to mention it's a waste to be paying for tickets for people to ride into a place they don't need to be or shouldn't be, when they're taking up valuable space for actual commuters that need to get to and from work, so. So, yeah, the whole thing is challenged in itself, but that's something, that was one of the hot topics we discussed, along with fixing the fourteen freeway, which will probably be a discussion had for many, many years, but I feel like we're at least making progress.
The Stan Kill Transman, get them that state route, make them hold their feet to the fire, so.
Yeah, they're gonna start doing a lot of little stuff like repainting lines, cause if you drive it now, you'll see the lines need to be repainted, the signs need to be redone.
How long it took me to get, I had a meeting this morning, you know how long it took me to get down there this morning? I left a few minutes after six, I got there at nine AM.
So, yeah, it's just getting worse.
At nine AM.
So, yeah, I told them, "Next time it needs to be a Zoom meeting," so.
Yeah, that's when Zoom meetings are good. So, uh, we went over that, uh, audit committee, uh, Laura was with me. Uh, it wasn't a finalized audit from my.
No, no, it was, uh, introduction to the beginning of the audit and introduce, introduction to the, the people who are doing the audit, what they were looking for, and what are, uh, what kind of accountability items they will be looking at.
Oh, kind of a touch-and-go meeting and, and due diligence and going over everything.
Who presented the final, uh, results when the audit is actually done?
Uh, I had PWRA, which is Palmda Water Recycle Agency, I wasn't able to log in through Zoom on that one. I did attend, uh, uh, I watched, Juan was there. Uh, we're still moving forward on, we're, we're shifting gears as far as using recycled water, purple pipe, where you can just use it for watering the grass, let's say, to shifting the focus on using the, the, the sewage water as reusable potable water, uh, for homes and, and businesses and stuff like that. It's, uh, it's a newer practice, Orange County does it, actually, the entire, uh, county, Calabasas. So, it's a system, uh, that's being, uh, used and we're exploring it. We need to do, um, a sample station, I guess, first, to show it and to, uh, introduce it to the community before you build the whole thing. It's gonna be a very large project, but i- it's probably gonna be necessary moving forward. If we don't solve the water storage problem, we're gonna have to reuse this, the sewer water, as, uh, disturbing as that sounds. But they promised the water is cleaner than ever, and it's been sanitized and UV sterilized and so on and so forth.
I don't let my dog drink out of the toilet, but that's.
Yeah, so that's, uh, Palmda Water Recycling Agency. Uh, AVA QMD, uh, we awarded nearly, uh, thirty thousand for, uh, a clean air tractor for a local farming company, around twenty-four K, uh, for, uh, new electric lawnmower equipment for a gardening company. Uh, we had a special meeting for the Ritter Ranch CFD, uh, briefing, and Halloween was this weekend, the Anavertia Community, and uh, for those of you who live out there, got stuck in the traffic, uh, I apologize. But, uh, it's a popular spot, we have a lot of people from, uh, all over the city that, that come to see our neighborhood set up. It's something that our community gets really involved with, and, uh, it was a good turnout, and I think everyone had a lot of fun. That's it for me.
Thank you. So, um, along with, uh, the other council members, I participated in many of those, uh, same events. Um, a couple of them that were unique, uh, that, that, uh, assignments that I have, uh, also included contract cities and legal cities, uh, legislative wrap-ups and legislative plans for the, uh, upcoming, uh, the upcoming legislative session, um, the, uh, Um the uh um the, on the radio program, we made a point of um stressing the uh. Fentanyl awareness and the programs we've got and remember, you go on the city's web page, it's right on the top. And so if you have uh questions, concerns or issues, the information is uh is right there. There were tons and tons of uh ribbon cuttings uh and open houses at uh many of the new businesses. Um New Senior Center uh had their open house over at the the Palm Vista. And in Oregency Palms over in Laura's district, I think, this is getting ready to open over there. They got a couple of pickups that they're uh re- resolving. Uh and um Liability Trust Fund, uh I uh participate in those meetings on a regular basis. Our station is traditionally one of the lowest claim rates um in the entire county of Los Angeles. There's something to be said for that and uh um the uh if we only could just quit wrecking the cars.
You're talking about the Palmdale Sheriff's Station?
Yes, right.
Just clarify.
Sheriff's Station, correct. Uh but that's a credit to the uh to uh everybody over there. Um the uh um uh what was the uh, what was it? The heck was that other thing? Oh, the um, I was up at the fair too, but I was up there uh in my volunteer capacity. And um anyways, there's a lot of good stuff going on and there's a whole lot of stuff that's gonna be happening s- uh this coming year. And much of it was sent into place by the five people you see sitting up here. Uh we try to address things and fix things as they come up. Uh sometimes it doesn't move as fast, we have that discussion all the time. And uh I will turn it over to City Manager for her comments and her report.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Did you cover Sprouts?
Oh.
Sprouts and then the trunk retreat, some other events, the hoodonists, there was, there was a lot. I just wanna say that I hope the public is noticing how many more um events that we have for the the residents that we haven't had for two years. Um so I hope that they they continue to partake in all of events that we have.
So to echo that uh part of the report this evening, we'll be to highlight a few of those. If you can't find something going on in the city of Palmdale, you're not looking really hard, or very hard, rather. Uh I think we had eight events this weekend in some way, shape or form. We had the How Halloween event, which was super fun at Yellen Dog Park. Dia de los Muertos right here in Ponce de Llan Square, the trunk retreat that we had in conjunction with uh the Palmdale Sheriff boosters, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. Highlighting domestic violence um right here at Ponce de Llan as well. Uh we were gonna have some really great uh holiday events coming up, so pay attention to that. Um in the next couple of weeks, we're doing a few new things that I think will be impactful in the community. Uh over and above that, more of um the work side of things, we continue to have the Sustainable Transportation Plan meetings, I think there's actually one going on right now. Yesterday, we kicked off the Citizens Academy with, I believe, over fifty participants, it's a huge academy. Uh that will um kicked off last night, just an opportunity to get some ambassadors for the city and things like that, uh that will go through the about the end of the year. Uh we were announced as a Platinum Awardee by SoCal Ren for the Natural Gas Savings Agency Electricals, Agency Electricity Savings, say that fast three times. And Sustainability Best Practices as a city. We also accepted officially today, the American, maybe it was yesterday, the American Defense Communities Award that we announced a couple of months ago, uh that ceremony was held. In uh Arizona earlier this week. As everyone mentioned, Sprouts opening, I think there was about five hundred people in line at six o'clock in the morning last Friday, it was, it was great and the line continued all day.
Got there at four thirty.
And uh celebrated Pier Eighty Eight as well and there's several more coming before the end of the year. Uh Yellen Park is out to bid and we hope to close that here in the next couple of weeks and bring that before you as well. And then finally, I would like to take the opportunity tonight to introduce the city of Palmdale's new P I O, Thomas Lynch, he joined us on Monday. We're very excited to have him as part of our team. Uh he's he's got some great ideas, I think you're being ushered up here, sir. And uh uh really gonna increase awareness uh of everything that we are doing um in the city of Palmdale because there are a lot of great things going on. And I'll turn it to you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Got your speech ready?
Introduce yourself, sir.
Well, my name is Thomas Lynch, I am the Public Information Officer now. Um I've never seen a public information officer who does not like to talk, so if you have another hour, I can entertain you. Well, I I hail from the the great state of Connecticut from a long time ago, I went to North Carolina, uh where my family's from. And then I moved to California about eight years ago. I started out when in California with the probation department in San Bernardino as media specialist. I was P I O in Greenville, North Carolina before I moved to California. And I was with them for eight years and I came here and I'm enjoying this beautiful city. And I'm enjoying my work right now, so it's it's pretty nice, I've I've been warmly welcomed. I have a lot to do, there's a lot that you're gonna see from our office and I'm excited and ready to go.
Thank you, sir, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We participated this morning in our Spanish uh speaking program.
Yes.
We're introduced to the Spanish uh audience on uh on the radio station.
Yes.
So thank you very much for that as well.
Okay. Thank you, State Department fifteen. I have a request.
I'm sorry. Right.
So uh if staff can provide the council with a memo on the one million dollars that the council approved to put grass on Yellen Park. This was uh on the budget in July. Thank you, Council, for approving one million dollars to put grass on Yellen Phase One. And also, please put a timeline on Yellen Park in two thousand sixteen when I was elected.
Copy of the C I P update.
When I was elected in two thousand sixteen, there were zero dollars on Yellen Park Phase Two. Now there is fifteen million dollars for Yellen Phase Two. Uh if you can please give us a timeline. Uh also, the roundabout, the council also approved landscaping on the roundabout. Can you please provide the council with, in a memo, the timeline to have those three projects? Um so that the residents of the city of Palmdale know that there is Phase Two for Yellen Park coming up with fifteen million dollars. Zero dollars in two thousand sixteen and one million dollars for grass on Phase One of Yellen Park. Uh I cannot put the grass myself. Uh the council directed staff for a one million dollar grass project on Yellen Phase One. That way, I think that the citizens need to know that those projects are advancing and a timeline as to when those projects are gonna be uh ready to go.
The grass, just as a point of clarification to I, forgive me, um the grass was wrapped into the um. The bid that is out on the street right now, that closes later this month, and to give you an update, and we will still prepare the memo in greater detail. Uh the roundabout went out to publication uh as a bid item with on October seventeenth. So that should be back here um in November as well for award.
So um in in the past, um the previous city managers that we've had, I've I've asked to put on our website um our C I P projects for the public to actually. They can go and they can see what's gonna happen in their neighborhoods. I also wanted to put for years um a repavement or repair schedule for the streets of the city of Palmdale. So, cause we get, all of us get emails all the time, when are you gonna fix my street? When is it gonna be repaved? Um so that a resident can just go to our website and click, you know, re- street repair scheduling. I I know it's subject to change, I know it's a, it's it's a dynamic thing and it will always change, but. Um I think the public needs to know that we do have a plan and we do care about them and we are gonna get to them and where do they fit on the schedule? And I'm hoping that we can work that out to have those two things added to our website if possible. So that's perfect timing, we are working on a website refresh right now and if those aren't already on the radar, they will be, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So both of those uh tend to speak to the uh my fingernails on the chalkboard. We need to get that update, a C I P update, the, just the raw one, where we, when people call us on this stuff, we're able to look at it and say, this is where we're at on it. Because it um it's it's bad enough that the public doesn't know, but if we don't know and makes us look like we're not paying attention to the money we budgeted, so. Um just a reminder on that, maybe the uh next guy in his chair will get it, so. Okay, uh anything else?
We'll have to come out and vote November eighth next week.
Yeah, don't, yeah, otherwise, you you get what you don't vote for, so, or you get what you vote for, alright, thank you.